We will turn the time over to Assistant Superintendent Darren Nielsen.
Thank you, Chair Davis. I am happy to be with you today. Hopefully you can see my screen. Let me put it in presentation mode. It's nice to move from an urgent matter to a more long-term matter that we're going to discuss over the next, I assume, forty-five minutes now, Chair Davis, instead of sixty minutes that we were allowed unless you want to split overtime with this study session topic in the next.
We will split the amount of time, so you'll just be minus seven and a half minutes.
Okay, all right. I want to thank Board Members Hart and Hutchings for allowing me to set the table, so to speak, for your discussion as a board about the school accountability redesign work. I'm looking forward today to listening to and to documenting your comments around this topic as it'll help inform the work of both the advisory and executive committee going forward. This is just a high-level overview of how we plan to spend the time over the next forty-five plus seven minutes. I'll take just a few minutes. I think I have five slides around the background of the school accountability redesign work. And then Board Members Hart and Hutchings will take over the rest of the discussion around this topic. I just want to remind everyone, Board Members and those in the public who might be attending this meeting today, where this work started. Back on May 6th, 2021, the board approved this recommendation to create a holistic student-centered system of accountability and support. That document is found in Civic Clerk as an attachment. I brought it into this meeting so people wouldn't have to go dig back through that. And that provided the funding that allowed us to go to an RFP to hire some consultant or consultants to help facilitate the work. That process resulted in a partnership between Knowledge Works and the Center for Assessment in helping us to go forward. I also want to remind the board and then also the public who's attending to this, just to acknowledge, the Utah State Legislature has established and maintains authority for Utah School Accountability System. And they direct the State Board of Education to adopt rules to implement a statewide accountability system. So this redesign work that we've engaged in is a partnership between the Utah State Legislature and the Utah State Board of Education. And that's just, that's just the slide here. There's a reference to the statute that establishes that. So the purpose of the work, the current Utah accountability, school accountability system was established or redesigned, so to speak, in 2017. There were changes made at the legislative level that introduced some new components of the school accountability system. But even since then, advancements in Utah's Portrait of a Graduate and personalized compass-based learning increased this, created this increased need to consider redesigning Utah School Accountability System. In addition, the suspension of statewide assessments across not just Utah but across our country in 2020 really highlighted what many people have felt for a long time, and that is an over-dependency on a small number of assessments connected to the school accountability system. And I'm going to turn the time over to Board Member Hart to get into a little bit more detail about the way the work is proceeding.
Sure. So, Board, hold on to your seats. You, this will be a participatory study session. So there are some questions that we're going to be considering at the end. But the question that you need to consider first is, what, how do you, how do you want to hold your child's school accountable? Meaning, right now, don't think about assessment. Don't think about tests or test scores. Think about how to, how a school can be accountable to its constituents, students, its families, its parents, taxpayers. What measures, what things can, can a school, a district, a state provide as information for accountability purposes to measure school quality? So to answer this question, we have two committees. Really, it's three groups total. On the screen are two committees. One is an executive committee. And in board backup, the actual individuals on these committees are listed. They come from the House, the Senate, the State Board, the Governor's Office, and organizations such as USSA, USBA, and the Charter Board. Then there's an advisory committee. That is made up of twenty-nine members. LEA leadership, assessment directors, school leadership, teachers, parents. And there's some overlap, of course. Many of those members have students in schools as well, so their parents as well. I was able to attend an advisory committee, and it is just astounding the level of knowledge and professionalism and expertise that is in that group. I think I know personally, I've worked with more than, I think I counted twelve. And they're just amazing individuals. So we're in good hands with this. The third group is our stakeholders. And in addition to those two meetings, we're going to have stakeholder engagement activities around the state. Of course, COVID changes these plans a little bit, but the stakeholder survey is almost ready to go. Finishing touches on that. There will be virtual brainstorming and feedback sessions in March in different areas, and then in-person meetings in April. And that feedback will obviously go to the executive and advisory committees at different points, and we'll clearly use that feedback as we, to guide our work. So the trajectory, how this, the timeline, the focus, you see that the executive committee input is really strong at the beginning and at the end. That work has already started. The Knowledge Works and Center for Assessment, they really are facilitators. They're not doing this work for us. They, they are guiding, guiding. They're herding cats, some may say, and really pushing us to think outside the box, consider the options, weigh the costs and the cost benefits. So executive committee at the beginning, executive committee at the end. And really, the yeoman's work is of the advisory committee in the middle. And you can see how it starts out, you know, with a foundation and a theory of action and overall goals and big picture. And then each time, it gets incrementally more specific. And it concludes with a report, but that report is an action report, not just, well, here's some interesting data. It's policy recommendations, which then, you know, we will pass along and also use as we make decisions moving forward. So it's, it's a really fascinating process. It's very painstaking. It's not anything that is rushed, and it's very thoughtful. I've been really impressed with Knowledge Works and Center for Assessment. The themes and problems, concerns that the advisory committee found, they were really concerned, as you can see, with actionable, timely, relevant information that can be used. The utility of the information coming out of the assessment system is critical. They want expanded indicators, again, not just assessment indicators, but indicators of quality. And it's important, as with all that we do, local agency and flexibility to meet the specific needs of communities because our communities are so different. And this idea that, you know, it's typically been very school-focused, individual-school-focused. But what we know, a more nuanced look, a more complete picture, is that schools don't exist in a vacuum. They're, they're part of LEAs. They're part of larger groups of schools, and they're part of the state. So we need to look not just at the school because they are not always in control of all of the factors that, that they have or their situation, you know, they, they have, there is some responsibility on the part of districts and the state to look at individual schools in context. Of course, the executive committee was a little bit, a little bit briefer, used fewer words, but basically said the same thing, that the uses and consequences, both intended and unintended, the idea of assessment as, or accountability as punishment is certainly not where this group wants to go. In fact, very much wants to stay away from that antiquated and horrible notion that, that came from, from past, past times that we know is not effective. They want expanded systems, expanded indicators. And then there's an acknowledgement that assessment still needs to remain part of the system. The truth is that the test scores do matter. A lot of times, that's the first thing families are looking for when they're moving into the state and into communities. We do have a responsibility to share information about student academic achievement, but it needs to be in context with, within that, those expanded indicators. So these are some of the themes that emerged, but we're going to ask you for your, your ideas on some of the challenges and concerns at the end of this presentation.
Thanks. And to give you kind of an idea and start thinking about what we need, what we mean by expanding indicators, we want to look at a couple of different documents that this board has helped create. First is Utah's Portrait of a Graduate, which we want to be able to, in our accountability system, to be able to measure the quality of schools as far as following Utah's Portrait of a Graduate. So this is a really good example that shows you, here's our, you're all familiar with the elements of the Portrait of a Graduate and pointing out that only one of these, only one component measured in the current system is, and that's the academic mastery, is really reflected in our current accountability system. And so there's a lot of other areas of Portrait of a Graduate that really, within the system that we have right now, it's, it's hard to measure. You can't find a way to be able to demonstrate how a school is doing in those other areas. And so as we talk about redesigning accountability and expanding indicators and measures, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about how do you demonstrate wellness? How do you demonstrate other things like creativity and innovation at a school? How do you demonstrate the quality of communication at the school? And that's the, the skills of communication that students are developing in a school in an accountability system. And so the next area also that we've been tasked to include is personalized competency-based learning. And so as schools are turning to personalizing the learning for students, there needs to be a way for the schools that are using this framework to be able to demonstrate the quality of their work. And it's always not, not always a fair indication in our current accountability system to show the progress in these areas. So think about how does a school show how strong they are in, in their purpose and vision? How do you reflect that in accountability system? How do you show that students are learning agency in an accountability system? And you can see some of the other areas that this is where we're really trying to stretch our own understanding of accountability and thinking out of the box and creating new ideas and ways to measure our school's abilities to meet these frameworks and these ideas that we've given to schools and are encouraging them through our strategic plan and through the resources that we offer to schools as ways to improve student learning. How do, how do we reflect that in an accountability system? How do schools, I think one of the challenges for schools that are trying to innovate and are trying to use Portrait of a Graduate and use PCBL is that the, it takes a while for the academic mastery to catch up sometimes. And so it looks like a school isn't doing as well when they're focusing on a multitude of areas and not just the academic mastery. And so it's just the academic mastery. It should be, definitely be a part of that. But there are also other indicators that we're really not looking at to see, to really show off some of the strengths and quality of the different schools around the state. So this is just a reminder. This is Utah's current dashboard for high school accountability. And you can see, I'm sure you're familiar with the different areas. We have achievement based on proficiency. We have growth. We also have English learner progress. We have post-secondary readiness, and that's for the high school specifically. There are also, we have allowed some self-reported indicators, which is a head start into this area of allowing schools that are doing innovative things and maybe want to show off some of these other additional areas that aren't covered within the statewide accountability, to be able to show off their progress and their strength in some of these other areas. So we have started in that direction, but we, we really want to have, have it be able to demonstrate specifically these, the elements of Portrait of a Graduate and PCBL in our statewide accountability system and not have it be just kind of a one-off of my school is strong in this. But there's also that we, parents, how parents use the accountability system is important to think about. Compare school and for schools to be able to look at each other and know how they can learn from each other and how we can use the accountability system for school improvement. We want to give you an example from another state, just to show you what is also going on outside of Utah. Another state that uses, this is a school culture dashboard. So they use a dashboard idea, just like we do. But here, they are attempting to measure some of those things that we're looking at adding in our accountability system. And they do it, I think primarily through some different surveys of different stakeholders. And so you can see that they're attempting here to measure, for example, a sense of belonging and a sense of student safety. And how does the student value learning at the different schools? And then I'm kind of, I went to the right side, but you can look on the left side. You know, there is an academic challenge, student emotional safety. How safe do students feel emotionally at school? And what's the student-teacher relationship like? Now, when you think about these things and you think about, you know, what do different stakeholders look for in a school? This opens the door for additional stakeholders to really have insight through the state's accountability system to see what the school's strengths are and not just this more narrow view of how does the school do academically? It really does expand for different stakeholders to look at the school accountability system and have a good idea if the school that they're looking at fills the needs that they're looking for. And so that's what we're hoping to do with Utah's accountability system. So we want to go on. We have just a, I think, three main, probably, I think we're broken down into four, but three main questions we want to put out to discuss. And we thought it would be helpful, just so we can make sure that, you know, this isn't just an exercise that we're going to walk through and then forget about, is we've asked that staff would, as we discuss these questions, they're going to take notes and we're going to bring these notes back to the executive committee. And I believe that Sybil actually shared, there's a webpage for the advisory committee and the executive committee with all their resources. So there's a lot of reading that you can do if you, you want to really dig in deep on accountability systems and, and, you know, what the, you know, cutting-edge research is looking like and how COVID has affected accountability systems. There's a lot of really great research there. If you want to go into those webpages, it's the research that we've been asked to read as members of these committees. And we can also, we'll be adding some of this input from the board today in those resources so that those committees have an idea of what you have shared with us today. And they can keep it in mind as they're making the recommendations in this process. So the first discussion question is, how do you determine the quality of your children's or neighborhood school? So what is important to you when you look at a school that maybe you want to put your children or grandchildren in or in your area? What, what are aspects that tell you this is a good school? I think this is where we're going to transition to taking notes.
Yeah. And maybe this is going to come as a shock, but I actually do want the academic to be the top priority, not the social-emotional learning. But the, you know, even with our Portrait of a Graduate, some of those things listed there, most of those things we do measure, governmental systems. Oh, I just had it up. I actually don't want the school to be measuring some of these other things. I feel like we're asking our teachers, we're asking our education system to do things that just really are beyond their capacity to do. So I'm, I'm trying to understand all of this as we're carrying on this narrative. I actually do want high academics. I want the, I want the assignments to be rigorous. And I want kids to, to, to be able to engage and to be able to read and to write and to do those things. So that is what I'm looking for.
I'm certainly highly interested in what's happening academically, but I'm perhaps more interested in school culture. How do the various stakeholders interact together, parents, teachers, administrators, children? How do they work together to ensure that the student has a sense of belonging, a sense of collaboration, is beginning to explore critical thinking, is learning to communicate, to be accountable? And is it, is it a together proposition? Do I, will I feel welcome jumping in and totally being all in in this process of, of educating my child or my grandchild? And is that kind of enthusiasm and energy welcome in that school environment?
Thank you. Board Member Klein?
Yes. So a quick statement and then a couple of questions. So this past year, U.S. Attorney General Garland came under fire for using his office to go after parents who oppose the teaching of critical race theory in their local schools. And as news stories covered that scandal, parents became aware of Attorney General Garland's son-in-law, who runs an online social-emotional learning company that we're all aware of called Panorama Education, that is profiting off of measuring children's social-emotional learning skills and commitment to concepts of critical race theory. So my two questions are, one, were you aware that Panorama Ed uses Portrait of a Graduate policy reforms to measure and hold schools accountable to critical race theory? And second, why would our board choose to move forward with school accountability pilots or support legislation that would help Panorama Ed with its national partners to measure and hold Utah schools accountable to social-emotional learning and those critical race theory concepts that are coming through under Castle's new definition?
I'm not aware we're using Panorama in our accountability system as part of what they are talking about today. Board Member Hart, but I'll let you go ahead and address that.
Yeah, this is, this is not at all a panorama. That's not at all where we're going. In fact, I think clearly academic achievement, like I said, is terribly important. What we're trying to do is not rely on single standardized test measures to assess how schools are doing in that area. Oh, we, 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 our schools exist to educate students, clearly. In order to do that, and in order to, to be transparent to parents and others, we need to have a system that provides that information to parents. We, we need to be more transparent. We hear that loud and clear. So we have a responsibility to create a system that is transparent and does not rely on a single test score. So we need to do that. We need to create that system. And right now, we're just brainstorming ways to, to convey the information that a wide variety of stakeholders want. But in no way, I, I need to be very clear, in no way is this a, are we going away from academic measures? That's, that's the opposite of what we're doing. We're trying to get a better, more holistic picture. And to be very, very clear on that, Knowledge Works and Center for Assessment, they're doing, they're providing no content. They are simply, they have a lot of understanding of what's going on with assessment in different areas, in different parts of the country. They have deep knowledge of what Utah has done in the past, and they're simply really, truly hurting cats, making sure that we're moving forward in our initiatives. So Stacy, did you want to address that anymore?
No, I think, I think you addressed it very well. I would hope that in this discussion, in order, what we really are hoping is to have some information to take back to these committees. And so if, you know, if you want to answer this question by saying academics and nothing else, wonderful, we will communicate that. And that will definitely be part of the message that they receive from this, this study session. So I would like to be able to hear as many opinions as want to be shared in the short amount of time that we have, though. But I also want to also say, of course, academics is an essential and very important part of our accountability system. Nobody's saying that we should disregard it or minimize it at all. We just, there are other stakeholders, and there, there are plenty of parents that, when they look at a school, it's academics. And and does my struggling learner have an opportunity to progress even if they can't meet proficiency right now? There's just a lot more than academics, even though, again, academics is vital. And I think we already, we, I think I'm safe to say we're, we agree with that. So I would like to hear some other board ideas.
Can I just follow up with one short little thing before we move on? And Knowledge Works, I just want to be sure that whatever direction we're going, that this is locally driven and it's, and that we're not taking our cues from groups like Panorama or Knowledge Works, who is deeply involved in helping us create our Portrait of a Graduate. This is just a quick quote from Knowledge Works. It says, "We have for far too long papered over the racist tendencies of our founders, leaders, structures, and history. The markers of systemic racism are abundant and throughout our history. It doesn't take long, even when reading the Constitution, to be confronted with systemic racism. We need to collectively change our education systems with justice and equity-driven practices." So just as a heads up where these other companies are coming from.
Thank you. And I think it's important to note, just so we're very clear about accurate information here. Knowledge Works in the facilitation of Portrait of a Graduate facilitated only logistics. They did not contribute content. I was on that committee as well as some other board members. And I think it's very important to say they had the RFP to facilitate the logistics, but all of the content came from Utah contributors. And that's very important. And that's very important to communicate accurately to our public. Board Member North.
I, yes, I in answering your question here of what would be important for the quality of school, I would say that we have to get right down to people's basic needs, and that would be physical safety. You know, it could be the world's most wonderful academically challenging school, but if they've got lead paint or some other physical safety, you know, my my child is not safe there, that would be, to me, the most important thing. But I also have a follow-up question. Could I ask that? It's housekeeping.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, on the on the from from the backup, it says on this sheet, click to drill down. On mine, I can't click anything to drill down, but I did have a question on, for instance, what exactly is value of learning? So is that something that people will be able to do is click the box? And then it would explain what each of these are a little bit more in-depth?
Remember Hutchings, I see.
I think if if you're talking, are you talking about the dashboard?
Um, it's the the one with the the orange, yellow, and green. I guess that's the dashboard.
Yeah, it actually, because we did see you, you would click on that and it actually drills down and it would show you several survey questions that they they had asked and what the answers were in order to get that score.
Okay, thank you.
And Board Member Hart, did you have an additional answer your hand?
No.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Straight.
Yes, thank you. So appreciate Board Members Hart and Hutchings in their presentation. It was it was exciting to to see that. It's something I'm highly interested in and have been a part of in the past. So thank you for such a great job. When I look at this question, I have lots of things that come to mind. I value grow growth more than I value proficiency, although I value proficiency a lot. But what is the direction? What is? What is the direction of the school? What is the culture? That was mentioned previously by by someone. I want a school that provides feedback that is timely, that is actionable. And I think that's an area where we really need to make some improvement on our side to provide that that feedback to students, effective feedback, supportive of school leadership, supportive especially of of teachers. I want efficacy with students. I want collaborative teacher advocacy. I want teachers working together for the for the good of the school. I want not just the teachers, I want the bus drivers, the cooks, the custodians, the aides, everyone in the school. They have found that quality schools, that it's just not the teachers, it's everyone, which goes to, I want high standards, but that goes back to growth and proficiency. I want a school that takes care of of students' needs. I want I want Maslow before Bloom. I want Maslow to get, let's take care of students' needs so that they can then expand their their learning and their growth and their their learning environment. I want my student to come home happy because they have efficacy, because students are empowered. Let's see, is there anything else? Thank you. I'm a little excitable right now, but it's I'm, this discussion kind of livens me up a little bit. Thank you.
I'm ready for like an amen brother. Board Member Hymas.
Yeah, thank you. So I I know I was mentioning the brainstorming ideas, and so I I wrote down a few thoughts to answer this question. How do we determine? And and I I don't know what's what exactly everything that is going on right now. But one of the things that I I wonder, you know, we talked about for academics, we we have to go beyond testing and I I look at the, again, the overall culture. Do we do we have an idea of where people go post-high school? Like, do we have a a measure of that to say, yeah, this this school, eighty percent of their kids go to the workforce? Or to school or trades, be it a trade school, undergrad, whatever? Do we have those in place? I think I think that's a good indicator on what we are teaching our kids in high school about their their ability to go into the those areas and their confidence to do such. And so I think that's something to be considered. As well, Stacy and Molly, you talked about the school culture dashboard, it being an example. And we've we've seen many surveys on these kind of topics. I think it was on the previous slide, but you know, academic challenge scale, student emotional safety scale, student-teacher relationship scale and 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 more. Do we take into account what the school has done for those things? I know that school safety was was brought up and it depends on the age of the kid. Honestly, when we when we see a survey done, I know that in my school, sometimes those kids, they, if something happens in the room and and it can become a joke real fast, and all of a sudden that survey is so skewed that you you really don't know what's what's true and what's not. And so I wonder if we ought to look at if there's a way to look at what the school has done, right? So for example, if you if you said, well, the survey says that that school is not very safe. But if you look on the information system and see that fights are very rare and bullying is only reported one or two times a year, that might give you a pretty good indicator that it's a pretty safe school. And so using more more metrics or diving deeper than than surveys and then looking at what's happening when students leave leave school, I know that's for for secondary, of course, or for high school graduation rates. I had one more, but it's it's gone now. So I'll turn the time over to somebody else.
We can come back to you. If you put your hand back up again, if you think of it.
Thank you. I wanted to just jump back to an experience that I had as a member, Straight was talking about. Everybody involved in the entire school culture, the lunch workers, the all of the team members who make experiences happen for kids and ensure success. I remember a day when Mosi White, former USBA and NSBA president here in Utah, came to our local school district and brought all of those people together, the lunch workers, the the bus drivers, the teachers, the parents, the front office staff, the students, and it went through an experience called Kids Count. Together, we brought out our best ideas, our best thinking in terms of of how we help kids succeed. And that kind of an experience really brought everybody into the picture. And for a long time thereafter, in a given school and particularly throughout the Nebo District, everybody felt such a buy-in in helping individual students discover their personal plan for success for life. I think the emphasis on academics is so important, but often that emphasis is only on numeracy and literacy and the things that are easily tested. But there are a lot of academic areas required for graduation in the sciences and the history and languages and arts and and computers and business and everything else, CTE, that can also be measured in very quantifiable ways. And given our population and how many of them are going to spend their lives not as college students and whatever college experience leads them to, but in the trades and in so many other areas of of endeavor, success and achievement is wrapped into a much larger picture. And we just need to find a way to assess and to encourage continued growth in all of these areas rather than being so specific to just a couple of subject content areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Moss. You're muted.
There we go. Sorry. Thank thank you both just for the great guide through this critical issue. And I'll just take my two cents and speak partly as a parent and as as a lawyer, employer, et cetera. I I look for depth of of engagement and critical thinking. And to to the to this balance that we're looking at between academics and your social and emotional issues. My my students are, excuse me, my my kids as students, I've seen have found their, I I think, greatest sense of self-worth and esteem and found themselves able to deal with some of the the tough things that come at you as they have had teachers that helped them dig deep, be challenged in in their subject, whether it's math or or art or dance. And some of my kids have had experience in 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 each of those. But really, to to help challenge them and make them dig. And, you know, that that's that that covers, to me, a a lot of both of those when we talk about the balance. So my my dad's last piece of advice, we before he passed away, when I was in college, was a particular university professor that he said would really challenge me and make me think. And there was a professor named Chauncey Riddle. I don't know if you ever heard of him, but you know, he 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 gave me a lot of a foundation, both in thinking and also sense of of worth and stability. So that's my thought. I I look for teachers that really engage them and challenge them deeply. And and the other balance there, I think, is one between, you know, the the teacher, we we use the phrase now of the guide on the side and rather rather than the sage on the stage. And we have, we have technology to help them. We've moved to a more constructivist pedagogy where the child is driven it themselves. And and I think there are some teachers that do that extremely well, and they still pass along the wisdom that they had. They they interrogate, and I mean, in a good way, interrogate, meaning the engagement with students. And and I find some that are that I think are not as quality, that tend to perhaps give them a device and let them go explore themselves. And and I I think getting that balance right is huge. If you know how to convey the wisdom and experience as a teacher, and some of that goes to, you know, tiered instruction, et cetera, down to details. But as as a general matter, if you know how to pass along what you know and interrogate and engage that student and then also empower them to learn for themselves, but not simply just, you know, send them off on their own, that that, to me, is quality. So those are tough, tough balances. I admire all of our fellow board members that actually do that work. And I get to watch as a parent, but as I've seen those that stand out to me, they've they've hit that balance in a really, in a in a way that really gets my kid engaged. So thanks for letting me throw my two cents in there.
Thank you. Board Member Cannon.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I recall redoing our dashboard for school accountability. And so we we went in and we put in all of the things, you know, the the test scores and and so on and so forth. But also, there was an option for schools to take a moment to add something to their dashboard that was unique or particularly good about that school so that hopefully schools wouldn't be just judged judged solely on test scores. And as I used that dashboard over a few years, I always checked there to see what had been put in in terms of something unique about the school, something the school wanted us to know about them. And a lot of times, schools didn't put anything in there, which made me sad because I would love to know about it. And one example, I think of in particular, I didn't see this on the dashboard, but I know as we were working with Midvale Elementary and they were in turnaround. And they came back to us, they were getting out of turnaround, and they gave us background on all the community and private companies and organizations that had come forward to help and lift and support this school. It was just awe-inspiring. And so I don't know, maybe you want to require schools to put in something special and unique about what they're doing, something that is more than a test score so that we can get a flavor for what's happening that's really good in so many of our schools.
Thank you. Board Member Hanson.
Yeah, thanks. A lot of what I was going to say has been said and probably better than I would have said it. But I think when I think about schools and their role with my kids, with with the community is first, I rely on schools or we have to help our kids and us working with our kids to define what success is for the child. And then after that happens, then to help them achieve that measure of success. So a child can't do that on their own. And if parents are helpful, then sometimes that, you know, results in a good, a good goal for the child. Sometimes families need some coaching and help to, you know, know what's really possible for their kids because it may be, I think we all want more for our kids than we have, but that may be more prevalent in some demographics and some parts of society. So those, I don't know how to measure that well, but there's an engagement factor. There's being comfortable, you know, in the school factor and environment factor. And then there's also a academic excellence, you know, whatever that means for that child. So not helpful as far as being able to quantify, but that's the feeling that I'd like to get across.
Thank you.
And I can I jump in here just?
I'm actually going to just turn the time over. You've got seven minutes, Board Member Hart, and I don't have any other hands.
Okay, so one thing I'd like to to make clear is, I think by showing maybe what another state has done, what we meant by that was not the indicators. It was the ability to do, say, a dashboard or multiple indicators. We have no interest in somebody else's indicators. Quite frankly, almost every one of them has to do a surveys and and that is not is not necessarily at all where where I personally wanted to go. It's just to show that there are different options. I I have a couple of questions. How many of you know how to access your child's school's fire drill reports that were required to do? How many of you can find very quickly your child's mission or the minutes of your child's building leadership team? Or the goals that your your child's teacher, school has set for for their faculty for the year? What we're looking at is trying to come up with a way to convey those less tangible things. And they may not be outputs, they may be inputs that are available to you to make a an informed decision. We've got a lot of parents that feel like we make information hard to find or we haven't done a very good job at at making information available. And this is an honest and earnest effort at at changing that. So I I don't think we're going to be able to get to our other questions, but they are important. They're in in backup if you'd like to see and and think about those. But it's an important conversation that we have so that we can be very involved as we figure out what accountability means to the to in this modern, to schools and in this environment that we're in. We just were at the very beginning stages of of this work. It is not the work of any small group. It's the work of as many people as possible. So this was one opportunity that we wanted to take to enlarge and have that those conversations. So that's kind of what I wanted to to say. Stacy, did you have some final comments as well?
Yeah, just to wrap up, I want to say that most important thing about an accountability system to me is that it's something that we can, and it's been is that it's something that we can, and it's been shared in some of our meetings, that it's something that we can use to improve our schools. And so academic scores, super important, vital. And we use that to improve our schools, but some, there are other components that contribute to the academic success of a school. And so if a school has the ability to drill down and have, know what those contributing factors are, then they can improve. Also, a parent can look at the academic scores and then see some of the other factors and say, look at my, my child needs a school that's strong in academics, but also in these areas. And it gives the parents a lot more information of the, the overall flavor of the schools, of the strengths and the weaknesses of the schools. There are also schools that perform phenomenally academically, but there's a lot of stress and anxiety in the school. And there's a lot of poor culture going on that certain students would not thrive in that kind of environment. And so it's important to give this well-rounded look for parents and for schools so that they can make the best possible decision for their students as far as the school that their student will thrive in, but also for the schools to know, how can we improve? Okay. Knowing that they're doing well or not in academics, super helpful. But to be able to drill down and say, you know what, we, in order to improve our academics, we need to work in this other very specific area. So that the students in our school will be successful. That gives everyone the information we need to improve our schools. And that's really, for me, the most important part of this accountability is so that parents know the best school for their student and schools know exactly what they need to do to improve and to give the best possible education to our students.
And as, but as much as we want to report out, we also need to think differently about a dashboard and maybe consider ways that it can be a two-way conversation. We're really pushing the boundaries of, of, and we really want to lead out and Utah can't. We also want to innovate and make space for schools that don't look like other schools. Because we need all different types of schools and our parents want all types of different schools. So as we, you know, include different, we have different schools, charter schools. There's talk of, of innovation, you know, supporting innovation. As we bring private schools into the mix in different ways, as we provide supports for homeschooling students, we need to make sure that we have, we, we make space for all different ways of educating students. And it's going to look different. And it's not going to be able to be just copied and pasted from somewhere else. And it is going to have to come from Utah. It can't come from a think tank or a, or a, a, a set of researchers at a university setting. So we really need your input and we need the input of all of our constituents as well.
Thank you. We are out of time, but I did have a text from a member who said, if we have additional input we want to make, or we want to answer the two other questions we didn't get to, is it possible to have a survey sent to board members to be included? So their input can be included. And I have some thoughts too, but we ran out of time and I get it. That's part of the deal with this. I see Board Member Lear has some thoughts. So what are your thoughts about that? Can, can we be surveyed or include in some way in that?
Absolutely. As long as it follows open meeting rules and you're providing information. I know that both Stacy and I, and I know he's been silent, but Chair Huntsman is on this committee as well. And who am I missing? Carol. Carol is on this committee as well. So, you know, we, we, we need to hear, we need to hear from everyone. This, this can't be done. And this is not committee work. This is, this is board work. So please, everything, Carol, Member Lear, Member Hutchins, myself, Member Huntsman, anybody. I mean, put it on social media for, you know, just get us the information.
Carol, do, do you, since you are on this organizing group, do you want to say a quick final thought? And then I'm going to have Darren. I think Darren's going to answer our survey question.
My, my thought was I, I'm a little wary of surveys. I, I want to make sure in, in, not, not from the board, not from the board providing input, but school surveys. I, I often found that there, they represent 10% of the people or they aren't, they aren't. We, we don't know how much of a percentage of the schools represented. So I truly care about school culture. I'm kind of in the Randy camp with, I, I think activities matter a ton and arts matter a ton. But I also don't want to hear about them from just 10 people in the school. So I'd like some more assurance that these metrics come from a, a, a important percentage of the school.
Thank you, Board, or Assistant Superintendent Nielsen.
Thank you. Yeah. To the question about ongoing opportunities for feedback from board members. The survey that we're going to release next week, likely on Wednesday.
Can you turn your camera off?
For a period of a month is, sorry about that.
Yeah, start over.
Okay. The survey that we're going to release next week, likely on Wednesday, on behalf of the board, related to getting feedback from our broad stakeholder groups is one opportunity that any citizen in the state of Utah, including board members could document and will have the opportunity to participate in. In addition, there'll be those public engagement meetings. Board members will be made aware of when those are, as well as you can promote that through your constituencies. We'll, we'll broadcast that widely so citizens know that of those opportunities to engage. And then the board obviously has the authority to request that this item be put on future agendas. You, you provided updates on the status of the work. And then the four board members to serve on the executive committee, your colleagues is another that I would feel, feel open to communicate with them regularly and their voices in the room for the executive committee. And that can amplify, you know, your opinion through those mechanisms as well.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you. You all gave a super presentation. It was really interesting to listen to all the board member comments. And we are going to transition over now to our next agenda item for our steady session. And Executive Davis, we are starting in three minutes later than I told you we would be starting in. So you have until 3:33 instead of 3:30.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And Kevin's going to put the presentation up there. He's driving for me today. I appreciate that. And I thought I'd just start with a, a quick introduction. I get to interact with some board members fairly frequently and others not so much. So just by way of introduction, Debbie Davis, I'm the Chief Audit Executive for the State Board of Education. I have now been in education since I initially came in January of 2014. And prior to that, I was at the state auditor's office. So I have just over 20 years of government auditing experience under my belt. If you ever want audit stories, catch me another time and I'm always happy to share. Kevin, will you introduce yourself really quickly also, since you'll be participating in this presentation?
Yes, happy to do so. And a privilege to be with you today, Board. My name's Kevin John. I'm the Deputy Audit Executive for the Internal Audit Department. Sorry, I'm clicking through a few screens there, trying to find the mute and unmute button. I'm not used to sharing my screen in these meetings. So anyways, I have approximately 20 years of experience in operations and auditing. The last 13 years I've been with the state of Utah. And the last six of those 13 years I've been with the State Board of Education in an internal audit role. So it's been a pleasure to serve you guys for the last six years and look forward to spending the next 30, 35 minutes with you today.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that. Just by way of introduction, the rest of our department, internal audit has seven and a half FTEs. So you can see Kevin and the couple auditors that work with him there, they do the majority of our audit work. My other director is Tammy Daly and Barbie, our auditor works with her. And they are currently tasked to the school fees consultation project. Over the next six months, they'll be transitioning back to audit work. And we're excited to have them return and help out with those audits. You're probably aware of my administrative assistant, Jen Tolman. She sends emails and meeting invites and is responsible for a lot of the refinement and polish on our materials that we put out. So we appreciate what Jen does. Then we've also recently added a hotline specialist position and that is our half FTE, if you will. And that was introduced to you yesterday with the new employees. He's been with us since about October and he's doing a phenomenal job for us. So what does internal audit do and how does the public education hotline fit in with that? Well, we have a strategic plan. Just as the board has a strategic plan, our mission and vision, you can see are listed there. The easy way to remember it is A E I O U and Y. So analyzing education independently and objectively for Utahns. And the why being, we want to support the board in your achievement of the board's strategic mission, which of course is advocating for resources, policy development, and then providing oversight and support. All of that we do through the lens of our core values, which you can see listed there, efficiency, excellence, life balance, professionalism and integrity. All of those items, in addition to the three goals that we have listed there, are included in my and my staff's performance plans. So our goals are operational excellence, cultural excellence and internal audit leadership. So what do we apply these things to? What are the things we're actually doing? Well, this next slide shows our five critical functions. And one of those functions is to administer, facilitate, maintain the public education hotline. And of course, that is our topic of discussion for today. I took the opportunity to go back and look at some of our documents and data and put together a timeline for you of some of the, the more significant stops along the way with the hotline. The hotline actually predates my coming to the State Board of Education. My predecessor kind of informally started the public education hotline as a best practice, which is a great idea. And so then when I became the, the Director of Internal Audit, we decided, let's formalize it. We created a policy and a procedure. We pulled out the data and started tracking it separately. And then you can see over time, we've just enhanced that process. We've improved the process as we've gotten more experience and gotten better at it. So you can see that kind of culminates in the, the, the public education hotline is now statutorily required. Right? And it requires a board rule to outline the process. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. But, but there's a timeline for you with, with some of the big milestones for us with the public education hotline in internal audit. Before I completely leave the internal audit department and talk specifically about the public education hotline, there are just a few data points I wanted to call out. So how much time does internal audit actually spend on the hotline? We have five critical functions. The hotline is one of them. You can see it's actually pretty minimal. I have my staff track their time by category, including our critical functions. So it's easy for us to go pull this data. You can see we've been maintaining the past couple of years and, and we're about on track this year at four to 5%. Which, which is where we lie. So with our time. This is, this is really interesting when you look at the next graph, which will show you the total number of hotlines by state fiscal year. You can see that they're increasing. So, and we'll, we'll talk about these data points a little bit more, these specific hotline ones. But you can see we're maintaining our time while hotlines are increasing. So we feel like we're, we're achieving that core value of being efficient and being excellent. So that's kind of how we look at this. The next slide kind of puts the, those last two slides together in kind of a time and effort, looking at the ratio of hours to hotlines. So you can see that, that we've been able to maintain, right? We decreased our, our hours to hotlines ratio and we're currently holding about 1.3 on the time it takes us, again, putting time and effort together for the hotline. Let's see, anything else I want to say there? No. So we, anyway, we feel pretty good about what, about the effort that we're expending with the public education hotline. And the time we're taking, we feel we have a pretty efficient process, a consistent process that we're applying. So now let's talk specifically about the hotline. I mentioned it's statutorily required and you can see there on the screen, the specific statute that requires the hotline, right? An individual may bring a violation of, of Utah code or board rule to the attention of the state board in accordance with the process and rule. Well, the board's rule is R277123. And the board, it was just last November that this rule became effective. And it essentially codifies the, the process that we were current, we were using as a best practice. There were a couple of little tweaks and we'll get into that as we discuss the process a little more. But, but really what the, the statute and the rule does is it outlines that the primary objective of the public education hotline is, is to allow individuals to bring concerns to, to the attention of the board, right? I don't know about any of you, if you've ever called a hotline, but a couple of years ago, I actually had the opportunity to call a hotline. Not the education hotline, of course, but my family experienced a, a life-threatening medical situation. And once we were past the immediate and urgent, urgent situation that we were in, we recognized that there had been some violations of, of regulations. And because of our experience, we wanted to report it so that no one else would have to go through what we went through. Very similar to the public education hotline, which where we, we encourage people, start local. Start with your teacher, then work up to, you know, the principal, the district, the LEA, and then if you need to come to the state, if that's appropriate. So I started with, with the entity where we had the concern and they listened to me. And, and they didn't do anything. And I was, I was frustrated. My family was frustrated. And so it turns out we went to the state regulatory agency as well. And, and I contacted them with my concern and they did an investigation and came back and found that, sure enough, there were some violations. And I don't know whatever happened, but I at least felt good about reporting and bringing it to their attention so they could improve. And I love that about the last conversation you had. It's all about improvement. Let's improve. Let's do the very best that we can. And I think the hotline helps with that. And in saying that, the hotline is the official with, with statute and the board rule, the, the hotline is the official venue to report concerns. That's not to say it's the only venue or method by which concerns in public education are, are identified, right? You as board members, you have constituents that contact you. I know the superintendency receives calls and emails with concerns. We have the U-PAC process. We have special education dispute resolution. The state charter school board has a hotline. So there's a lot of different ways that concerns in public education may be identified. And it would be, the risk management process is what would bring all of those together to, to really consider, okay, what things do we need to address in the public education system to improve as a system? But the hotline is the, the official and recognized method for bringing concerns to the board. Okay. I've asked Kevin if he would walk through our process. We've provided a flow chart and he's going to walk through that with you. So Kevin, you are up.
Thank you. So like Debbie mentioned, although it's not the only way people can report concerns, it is, it is an important one. And let me tell you why I believe that. It's because it is a wonderful way to mitigate risks to the board. Because you're providing an independent and objective venue where people, individuals, anyone can call and report a concern. So the thing about internal audit here is we apply the exact same process to every hotline. It doesn't matter who submits a hotline concern. Or, or necessarily even the gravity of it. We're going to take it and we're going to treat each of those hotline concerns with the same amount of care and consideration. So today, included within your materials, you should have received a, a flow chart that illustrates the process that is documented in, in internal audits, policy and procedure manual. So I'd like to spend, like Debbie mentioned, the next few minutes, kind of walking through that process so that we'll have, everyone will have a, a good understanding of what that process looks like. And any misconceptions hopefully can be erased in this process. Before I do, one word of caution, please be mindful of the fact that it is a flow chart and it's trying to illustrate a, a very dynamic, dynamic and nonlinear process in kind of a linear way. So with that, there, there's clearly some limitations. So my link works here. There we go. You should each have a copy of this. Hopefully you can see this well on the screen. But like I said, we'd like to take a few minutes and kind of walk through that. So first and foremost, in, internal audit has to receive a hotline call. And, and I say that not in jest, because we get a lot of calls or emails that come in that technically aren't hotlines. So we first and foremost have to decide whether or not it is a hotline call or is this something that, that should be forwarded to the help desk or something of that nature? That process happens before we even enter into this flow chart. And it's, so it's important to be mindful of the fact that if we do get like a help desk question or constituent feedback, it wouldn't go through this process and therefore it wouldn't be logged in these databases either that we're about to talk to. So what we're going to go through is very specific to something that we've already determined to be a hotline concern. So once we've received that hotline, or let me clarify, there are a number of ways we can receive a hotline. I don't know how familiar everyone is, but on the State Board of Education's website, internal audit's webpage has a, a specific landing page dedicated towards the hotline. And on there explains a number of venues or ways that you can actually file a complaint with the State Board of Education. First and foremost, you can fill out the reported concern form. So that can, that form is on internal audit's webpage, but there's links to that form on the board's landing page, on the contact page. So it's very prominent throughout USP's website. I, I think USP's done a very good job at making these contact methods very widely available and easy to find. Another way is you can submit a hotline concern via the email address. USP's got a dedicated email. It's audit@utah.gov where anyone can submit email. That email shows up directly in my inbox, in Debbie's inbox and our hotline specialist inbox, a number of inboxes. So it makes sure that, that it is received, if not by one, by many. You can call our dedicated hotline. Again, on our website or contact page, there's a hotline number. That rings several phones, a USB, all within internal audit to make sure again, if someone is available, we can get that, that phone call. Now, not always is there someone available, unfortunately, but internal audit's policy is within two days, we'll try to get back to someone. So we, we usually recommend leave a message and we'll get back to you as quick as we can. But you can anticipate that you'll hear from someone usually within a couple of days. You can of course mail a letter to internal audit at the USPE. That information's on our website as well. And the fifth way is you can, you can set up an appointment and, and come and meet with us. You can even walk into the State Board of Education's building and attempt to meet with us. And if one of us is available, we'll certainly try to make that a priority so that we can meet and discuss that. So those are the five ways that we can receive hotline. And, and I actually should say there is even a six and that is you could always call myself or Debbie or one of us directly as well. So with that in mind, yes.
Before you switch to the next slide and the next item, I just need to let board members know, I just got a call from Chair Hansman and they are announcing right now a kind of an emergency meeting for 3:30, 3:33. And so if you were planning on skipping out right at 3:30, I'm hoping that we can at least keep a quorum here to meet the needs of our USD school. Thank you. Go ahead, John. Sorry for the interruption.
No, not a problem. Wonderful. Okay, wonderful. So we, we've determined we've got a hotline call. It's come in one of those six ways. So what's the first step? As you can see in the flow chart, it's to consider whether or not this is a resubmission. If you remember, Debbie just recently talked about it. You recently passed it. R277123 subsection four outlines a very specific process and method to handle resubmissions. So that aside, we're going to focus, if this is a one-time hotline or the first time, we'll, we'll focus our efforts on that. So we would consider whether or not it's a resubmission. If it is, we would follow the process outlined and rule. Otherwise, what we're going to do is look at the method in which the hotline was received. So if it came in via a form or an email, we're going to create a hotline database record immediately. If it's a phone call or someone walked in, we're going to go through the process of filling out the forms and then going and creating a hotline database record. So internal audit maintains a database record. You can think of this more as a project management database than anything else. It really, the intent of this database really is to ensure that hotlines are being tracked, monitored, and closed in a very timely manner. So it really is recording who came, when they came, and then, you know, the process and the stage, the status of those. So we're, we're working through that. Once we've created the record, we then make a determination as to whether or not internal audit has a conflict of interest. Now, this is specific to the individual, but again, this is part of ensuring and mitigating liability, ensuring accuracy and independence and mitigating liability against the board. So there's a quick realization of whether or not there's a conflict of interest. I can say that this is extremely rare. Education is very large. My social circle is very small. So the likelihood and implications of a conflict of interest are small. But you get the idea. We, we do a conflict of interest analysis to make sure, can we remain independent and objective? And if we can't, then it's reported to internal audit leadership. And in that case, it's reassigned to a different internal auditor so that we can maintain that objectivity and independence. So the next steps then relate to documenting the information that's received and then analyzing that information. So we create a project folder. We store the information that's provided. And then we begin the process of analyzing and looking at that information to determine what are our next steps. The next steps are really a series of questions to make sure we have the appropriate information, adequate information, and it's being assigned to the appropriate person to resolve the solution. So as you can, if you're following the flow chart, you can see the first question is, is further information required, right? So if further information is required, we're going to request that information. And, and we're going to follow up to see if we get that information. Now, internal audit's policy on this is we will ask the complaint twice. We'll follow up with the complaint twice to try to get the necessary information to proceed. If it's not provided within two attempts, then we will update the hotline database to notify as much and then close the hotline. If that information is provided, then we'll reassess conflict of interest and we'll cycle through that process, document the new information, analyzing that information and determining, do we have the adequate information we need to move forward? Assuming we do at that point, then one of the questions we also ask is, who has jurisdiction over this issue? Does USP have jurisdiction or does another entity, or does it fall outside of the realm of public education completely? If USP doesn't have jurisdiction, then we refer that complaint to whomever does have jurisdiction, if we know. And this is usually done in collaboration with the complaint, if we know the complaint's information, right? If they're not anonymous. So we'll speak to them, we'll work with them, then we'll make referrals as appropriate. Say for example, to the LEAs. If, if the USP does have jurisdictional authority, then the next question that we ask is, who within USP should this hotline be referred to? Between external referrals and internal referrals, internal audit refers approximately 94% of all hotlines. So we're not spending a lot of time working or addressing issues or concerns. We spend the vast majority of our time trying to get the complaint in touch with someone who can actually resolve their problems. Now, there are a few cases where internal audit can be of assistance. We can help up, look up a rule or regulation and then resolve that concern that's demonstrated in the flow chart as well. Either way, whether it's referred or resolved, we then update the hotline database and then we close out that hotline. And that essentially is the process that we use with every hotline to make sure that people, their concerns and their issues are being addressed by the people who can potentially address them. So what I'd like to do for the next couple of minutes is just walk through a couple of common scenarios related to maybe questions we've heard in the past about the hotline process. And then hopefully this will be the cherry on top of the ice cream that just seals the deal that this process is hopefully serving the purposes intended to do. So if you will, bear with me for a minute. We'll use an imaginary scenario that internal audit receives a complaint form. This is the form filled out online. It comes in and it alleges educator misconduct by a teacher. In, in this fictitious scenario, the allegation is, is anonymous and contains no specific details about the misconduct, right? So walking through this process, what would that look like? Well, one, we would consider, is it a hotline? Yes. Is it a resubmission? We'd go back to our database query to see, is there any way we can connect this to a previous allegation? In this case, there's no details. We'll proceed. It's a form. We'll create a record. We'll consider whether or not there's a conflict of interest as mentioned. Given the fact that there's no details, it would be hard to make a determination. Therefore, we would proceed. We'd create a record, like I mentioned, and we would document this nonetheless in the event that the complaint later came forward and had questions related to whether and what was done with this file, right? We want to be able to have an educated and well-informed discussion with the individual in the future if they chose not to be anonymous. So we would then ask in this case, is further information required? In our scenario, the answer is clearly yes. We would attempt to request that information. Given the complaint chose to remain anonymous, we, there's no request possible. So is information provided? Clearly no. Multiple attempts are impossible. Therefore, we'll update the hotline database and we will close the hotline database. So as you can imagine, this type of hotline report is closed typically in a matter of minutes. From open to closed, there's just not a lot of actionable data here. So these hotlines don't take a lot of time. They don't take a lot of resources. In the event the complaint were to call back in this case and say, hey, I submitted a complaint in the past, we would try to collect some information, date, time, form, manner. We'd go back to the database and we'd search it out. And if we were able to tie it to this anonymous complaint, we could then, like you said, have an informed conversation. The question then arises, would this be a resubmission? And clearly the answer to that is no. No action was taken the first pla, in the first place. So what we could do is pick up from where we left off, but what we couldn't do or what we wouldn't do is consider this resubmission. So that's one scenario. So we'll do another scenario and, and then we can wrap this up. So our second scenario, we'll say the same thing. We received a reported concern form. It was anonymous still, but in this case, it contained a lot of details, very specific details related to who, what, where, when, how, related to this educator misconduct. So again, analyze whether or not it's a hotline. We know it is. So let's just jump quickly till we're going to create a record. We'll create a record. Is there a conflict of interest? Again, we'll assume no, because we rarely see it. We'll then begin the process of documenting this case in a file and start analyzing the information. Is further information required? The, the answer in this case is no. We're going to say they, they submitted adequate details for us to proceed. Does USP have jurisdictional authority? We would argue yes. Should the hotline be referred? We believe yes. To whom? In this case, we would argue U-PAC, right? Your Utah Professional Practice Advisory Committee. We would make the referrals appropriate. And, and there's cases where we refer multiple. So maybe this is one where we feel like we want to get the LEA involved as well. But in a lot of these cases, we would refer to U-PAC. U-PAC could then work with the LEA or whoever they felt appropriate, right? So would refer it to them. And then the expectation is that the Utah Professional Practices Advisory Commission, committee would follow their policies, their processes, their procedures to proceed. We would then update the hotline database noting the referral and then we would close the hotline. So similar to the first process, even though we have more details here, there's a little bit more time. It still would be an extremely quick hotline call. We could get it to U-PAC quickly. We could close the record for purposes of the hotline database, right? So hopefully, walking through the flow chart and then a couple of scenarios helps you better understand the process the internal audit uses in addressing hotlines that come in the USP hotline page. Hopefully you see that the process is designed to accommodate and respond to essentially any type of scenario. And because of the currently designed process, internal audit is capable of responding typically by referring, like we mentioned, 96%, 94%, I mean, to concerns in an efficient and, and consistent manner. So a couple of other points I want to make before I turn the time back over to Debbie. And that's just reminding you that given the multi-tiered governance in public education and given limited department resources, internal audit does not track what happens to hotlines once they're referred. We don't investigate them typically. Like you said, we only look at about 6% and, or only 6% retain or, or referred. And even those, a lot of those are just insufficient data. So they're retained because there's nowhere to send them. But, so we, we refer them out, but we do not follow up to track resolution to see how the department handled it. There are cases where they report back, but it's usually not a requirement or requested. They're just doing that as a courtesy. It's so that we have information as to what happened. So hopefully you can see that the process is efficient and effectively drives your, your constituents, the stakeholders of public education, to the individuals who are capable and have the authority to answer their questions. And that, and that clearly is the objective and the intent of the hotline. And so with that, I'll turn the time back over to Debbie.
Thanks, Kevin. I appreciate that. So as, as you can see in the flow chart and as Kevin mentioned, we create a record and anytime a record is created in government, that kind of triggers applicability of the Government Records Access Management Act, right? Grandma, we're all familiar with Grandma. The hotline is no different. And so on occasion, hotline information is, we do receive Grandma requests for hotline information. In those cases, we work with our records officer here at the State Board of Education to make sure the records are classified appropriately. For example, if we're, we're still researching the hotline, it's open. In that case, it's probably a protected record. Some of the hotlines we get, if there's a lot of information, there might be protected and student-protected information, right? That needs to be kept private or redacted. So just so you're aware, the hotline information is Grandma-able, but we do work with the records officer just to make sure that we're handling it appropriately. In every case, whatever that classification should be. So Kevin mentioned, as, as we go through this process and we're creating the record, we have this database, kind of a project management database for internal audit. We track several different data fields. Some of those fields would include how a hotline is received. Was it received by email, by phone, by the form? We track which staff in internal audit is, is assigned to the hotline. We track when we received the hotline, the complainant type. Was it a parent? Was it an employee? We also track who the, the concern is against. Was it a district? Was it a charter school? So a lot of different data fields that, that we have information on. Okay. So we have all this information. What do we do with it? Well, initially, and as showed on the timeline, right, we, the, the hotline has evolved over time. But initially, we were tracking things in an annual database. We, we just, every year, we just start over at number one. Number one, here we go. But after we, a couple of years and we had a couple of years worth of data, we recognized, hey, we can do, we can use some of this data for performance, for our strategic plan, performance reporting. And then we'd have requests as well. Well, you know, let's do some comparisons year to year. And we recognized that it was not very efficient to have a manual process where we were going and pulling data and having to open multiple documents to get information. And so we decided, got savvy and said, let's just have a cumulative database. And that's what we have right now. Our current database goes back to 2017. And so we, we can go pull information back from 2017, clear it to 2022 today. And, and what that allows us to do is we've created this dashboard and Kevin's going to kind of show you the dashboard. We provided a piece of the dashboard in the backup. So you could, you'll kind of have an idea of some of the things, the data that we have, the charts, the things that we can show. But I did want to walk through this and just kind of show you kind of the versatility that we have or if there's information that you'd like, with simple modifications, we can go pull data if we're tracking it. So the, the dashboard is, is split into two pieces and what Kevin's showing you is kind of the first section. The first section, you can see right there at the top where Kevin was hovering, is, those are slicers, is what they're called. Slicers. Makes you think of pizza and dinner, right? So slicers at the top. And what you can do with a slicer is those are attached to the charts below. So, so we have all of these charts and graphs that we've established. And if you go up to the slicer and say, I would like this specific information, all of the charts and graphs will change. So for example, on SFY is state fiscal year. And if you click on 2019, say I want everything for 2019, all of the charts and graphs change, right? Okay, we received 227 concerns. You can see our average closure time was 10 days. Wow, that was, that took a lot of time for us to close things. Who did we refer to internally? That kind of information is, we can pull it. Well, what if I want to get a little more granular? So I go back up to my slicers and it's, well, I just want the first quarter of 2019. So, okay, just the first quarter. Okay, we have 30, right? And, and we had some referrals to student support, to the state charter board. Anyway, you can just see, again, versatility. Anyway, you can just see again versatility and we can quickly grab data. Um, if we have specific criteria that we're looking for. Um, other things you can see the against type there. So um, uh, in the slicers, sorry, he's trying to read my mind as I, as I'm saying things, right? But the against type, is it, is it a district? Is it a charter? Is it? Um, we're not sure who the LEA is. We know it's an LEA, but we're not sure which one. Um, all that information is there uh, on the dashboard and we can quickly pivot and pull information. So that's the top part of the dashboard that we have. Um, so if you go down to the bottom, and this is what we provided because it, it's data that, that we seem to get requests on more frequently, is state fiscal year comparisons. And we just keep this, it's kind of static, but every time we receive a hotline, um, our, our data updates. Well, we say, you know, you save it, close it, reopen it, and then it will be reflected in the data. Um, so state fiscal year comparisons, we, we just have a few different points that we pulled. So the total number is listed there. Um, so you can see where we are this year compared to last year. Um, you can see permissions, permissions is, was it anonymous? Was it confidential or public? Um, we have breakouts by quarter. Um, you can see the against type, who is the concern against um, districts or charters? I think I did mention that the state charter school board has their own hotline. Um, so you, there, there are things you have to factor in when you're looking at data to make sure that you're not skewing the picture, right? So, so some important things to consider there. Um, the last couple of things at the bottom, the, the action type, Kevin mentioned, we refer a high number. We refer such a high number that it doesn't fit on our graph. So you can kind of see that it's filling off the chart there. We, we have so many referrals that we're making. Um, but, but the information is there nonetheless, and it does paint a picture of what's happening with the hotline. So again, this part of the database, the dashboard is, is static. The information's there. We can quickly go pull it. Um, so you're aware, we, we frequently provide information on the hotline to the audit committee. We also include information on the hotline in our quarterly newsletter. When we send that out, we make sure that the board gets a copy of that newsletter so that you're aware as well, anything that we're um, providing. I will also say, related to data, sometimes it could change. Kevin gave the scenario where, well, what if we closed it, but then somebody came back and provided additional detail? Well, in providing additional detail, some of our fields could change, which means some of the data could change. So again, very important to have context to what we're looking at here um, as we're utilizing data. Okay, so I've given you kind of a general sense of the data that we've had, and there's just a few areas that I wanted to call out specifically. Um, the first is just talking, reiterating about that referral rate. We do refer a high percentage of our, of, of concerns just because of that multi-tier governance. And as I explained earlier, we want people to start local, start where, where they have the best shot of. Uh, I shouldn't say best shot, just start local where, where, give the opportunity to, to resolve the concern at the earliest moment, whatever that is. If it's the teacher, if it's the principal, if it's the district, and it could be the state, because there's things the state has jurisdictional authority for. Um, but, but that's what we're interested in, and that's why we're, we're really trying to get people to the right place. So Kevin mentioned, we refer to um, LEAs to other sections at the State Board of Education. We, we often refer right back to the complainant and just provide them information. Hey, are you aware of this code, this law? Are you aware of this board rule? Are you aware of the UPAK complaint process? Um, just trying to facilitate and empower them to, to go after the resolution themselves. Um, because it's very powerful, right? If you can have confidence in saying, okay, I understand something and I really want to work through it and, and and so we really like to educate as part of the hotline process. So, um, when we make referrals and Kevin mentioned it as well, it's important to know, we don't, we're not tracking it after that. And so that concern then enters uh, essentially a new process, a new system that internal audit doesn't have any stayover, right? So UPAK has its process. Special education has a process for dispute resolution. Every LEA has a different process, you know, for, for their grievances or, or complaints that they get. And so to understand, well, what happened to the concern? You'd really have to go to whoever the, the referred party is to get that information. Because we simply don't have the resources to, to track that information. Um, okay, so that's referrals. Another data point I wanted to point out um, is what if we get a call that's not related to public education? Um, you might have seen up in the slicers, we have a non-public education entity. So we actually do track that information. And when I pulled this mid, yeah, mid-December, you can see since twenty seventeen, we've received about a hundred and seventeen um, non-public education-related concerns. We, we refer these, um, many of them are related to higher education or to private colleges or, or private um, educational entities. Not a lot we can do there. So again, we're, we're referring back to the complainant, hey, you're gonna have to go somewhere else for help. Here's a couple of things you might consider. Um, but, but anyway, wanted you to be aware that we do have that information. So if we need to look at public education only as opposed to effort from internal audit, um, we have the ability to do that based on the data that we're tracking. Um, another data point, and we've mentioned it, um, so Kevin gave a couple of scenarios where the individual was anonymous. So we have three, we call them our permissions status. Um, and you can see them there. So we have anonymous, confidential and public. And you can see the percentages there, public being they're not worried about anybody knowing their information. It could be shared. No worries there. About fifty percent of the concerns we receive um, are, are public status as we call them. The next largest is confidential, about thirty-five percent. Confidential is when we have the individual's information, but they've requested we not share it with anybody. Uh, and then the last um, piece is, is the anonymous. And you can see fifteen to sixteen percent of individuals request anonymity. Or they just don't provide information, like Kevin said. We don't know their name. We don't know their phone number. We have no way to get a hold of them. Um, so, so those would be anonymous. So you're aware on our website, um, as we provide information about the hotline, and then as individuals call in, we definitely encourage people um, to share their contact information. It can be prohibitive to our analysis process, our evaluation process not to be able to contact them. Um, that first scenario that Kevin gave where it's, there's just insufficient data. There's nothing we can do and we have no way to contact you. Right? That's very limiting. Um, so if they can at least give us their information and we can ask maybe a couple more questions, there's a much better chance that, that we can come to some kind of resolution or get them the help that they need by way of a referral uh, or something like that, if they'll provide the information. So we, we do encourage that. It's on our website. Um, we, we mention it when we talk to individuals if possible, or um, if, if they provide an email, we can get back to them. So, so that's another data point. And then just a couple of others as we're winding down our time. Um, and actually, before I leave that one, I did want to point out the number one reason individuals give for requesting confidentiality or anonymity is fear of retaliation. Fear of retaliation either for them personally or for their student. And having gone through my own personal hotline experience, I understand better now the fear of retaliation, where I was fearing there could be retaliation against the care that my family member might receive if I were to say something. Um, I, I can understand when individuals call the hotline and request um, anonymity or confidentiality because they're worried, right? We love our families. We want, we want them to be taken care of. You never want anyone to be harmed. Um, so I understand the fear. Not that it's always um, legitimate, but, but I understand it. Okay, now the couple last data points I wanted to pull out, um, just status. Um, status is our hotlines open? Are they closed? Are they on hold? We track this kind of again, is this is project management. And Kevin mentioned our policy to really turn things around in two days. Um, the rule actually gives us three days, but we try for two um, to, to get things closed. And by closed, I mean for internal audit. This does not mean that if we send something to UPAK that it's closed within two days or three days. This is just the status for internal audit. But it's very helpful for us to know kind of as a work list, these are open. I need to get, you know, we need to follow up um, to ensure we're complying with our internal policy, right? We feel it's, it's to be excellent, to be professional. We need to be responding to individuals in a timely manner. Um, and then we also have, we're, we're tracking closure time. You can see that we have average closure time there and we've been able to bring that down significantly. Um, it's in days and the day, why we use days is because we track the day we receive a concern and the day we close it. And that allows us to um, generate this calculation that shows our average closure time. Um, again, closure means just for internal audit. Um, and, and we don't, this isn't business days. This is just all the days in the week, all the time that it takes to close a hotline. So again, in understanding the data, it's even if it takes four days on average to close, that doesn't mean we're only working. That's the only thing we're working on for four days. Just, that's the effort over that time period. There was some effort in there that, that took the time to close um, the hotline for internal audit. So we've provided a lot of information and we have just a few minutes left. And we wanted to open it up. Are there any questions about the hotline that we can answer for you?
Board members, you have eight minutes for questions. Um, board member Earl?
I was gonna just say, this is the kind of data we need, right? Coming from our schools so parents can see what's going on. And I had, so I have a question, just even with UPAK. Parents can either go through the audit or they can actually report right to UPAK. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, and then um, wow, oh, no, I can't remember. I should write it down. Maybe I will.
I can come back to you.
All right, thank you.
Board member Heimis?
Yeah, thank you. Just the curiosity and, and the uh, resolve is such a small percent compared to what's coming in. And I know you guys are doing such great work. What constitutes a, a resolution? Like if we've done everything that we can and sent it on, is it not considered resolved or like, how do you get there? How do we up those percentages? I, like I said, I know you guys are doing great, but if I were somebody outside looking at that, not knowing what your department does, and I said, well, you get, you know, two hundred um, we'll call it complaints, whatever they are, right? Submissions. And a small, only like five of them are resolved, then how do we fix that? Or how do we look at that differently?
So I, I will attempt to explain this. So keep in mind, again, the database is a project management database. You wouldn't necessarily resolve a project. You would just complete it or close it. And so if you can see uh, in internal audit's perspective, resolution in the sense of it's being closed or it's being completed is, is approximately a hundred percent at this point. We have one on hold and one open at this point, according to the data. Resolution in this sense means that it's actually something that we looked at. So it, it's a very specific status and it's defined in our, our data dictionary, essentially in the database. But essentially means they came to us with, with a concern and we were able to resolve that immediately. So that's not to say that the, the other ninety-four percent weren't resolved as well. As we mentioned, they're referred to other departments and they may have very well been resolved. But that's just helping us identify how many started and ended with us, internal audit, as opposed to how many were referred out and then were we able to? So in lieu of resolved, you could just, you could change that word to retained. Essentially, it would almost mean the same thing. Six percent were retained. And with those, most of them were resolved. Some of them had insufficient data. We couldn't do anything with it, so they're closed. So so yeah, that, that word doesn't necessarily mean resolved in the sense that their problems were solved. It just means that it was retained within internal audit and that we were able to, to, to carry it throughout the entire process without having to refer.
And if I may um, jump in with, with one other little tidbit on that. Um, I just wanted to point out, of course, there's policy that's associated with this, right? Policy and resources. So given the resources that internal audit currently has and the number of hotlines that are coming in, um, we found that referral to wh- whomever can resolve the concern, right? And whoever has that jurisdictional authority is the most effective. Now, if there was a policy decision that you wanted internal audit or some other, you know, section or entity or whatever to actually do the investigation so that, so that we're getting to a, you know, the resolution of the concern that was brought, um, that would take additional resources, that would just be a different policy decision than what we're currently doing. And, and so is that an option? Sure, of course. Yes, absolutely. That's an option. Um, just, it's just a recognition of what resources do we have with, with what w- we have going on right now, that, that kind of led to the policy we currently have. Um, so I just wanted to, to throw that out there for the board as well, if, if there's a change in, in how we wanted to approach this.
And, and so before we move on, I will say this chart I pulled back up, this average closure time. Uh, member Heimis, to your point, I think earlier on, when we first started this process, we were, we were getting more involved in a lot of those cases and it was taking more time. And as the process evolved over time and we, we, we started referring more, that's when you start to see these average closure times drop because they're not staying with us throughout that time we're referring them, so.
Thank you. Um, board member Earl, did you remember your follow-up?
Yeah, good work.
Thank you.
No, I don't. Sorry.
Okay, uh, I see no other hands at this time. Um, so we have three minutes to, to wrap up. Uh, CAE Davis or um, Director John, do you have any um, final words for us? And then we'll, we'll have Chair Hansman come back in and start the new meeting.
Hi, Chair Davis. Maybe I'll just say in wrapping up, um, internal audit, we do take the hotline very seriously. It's a small percentage of time, but we want to do it well. We, we are definitely, or we feel because we work directly for the board, we are representing the board and we want to represent well. Um, so we feel as the process has been enhanced and improved over time, uh, we're really striving for that, but we're also always welcome to, for feedback. Um, so, so if you do have suggestions, if there's different data you'd like to see, if there's different um, dialogue you'd like to hear with the, with the hotline, um, policy points you'd like to discuss, we're very open to that. Um, but, but we do appreciate the, the support that we receive from the board. And, and the opportunity to, to represent you through the hotline. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm just, um, I appreciate your presentation and, and sharing the process with us and uh, so while we're waiting for um, Superintendent Coleman and Chair Hansman, just a, a last quick question for you. Um, the hotline predominantly is for uh, if there's a, a, a fraudulent uh, concern or an abuse of the law or a mistreatment of a person. It's not, it's not a place for us to direct people for opinions, correct? Like I, I don't like my child's teacher, so I'm sending in a hotline. But if the child's teacher did something, you know, inappropriate or abusive, then it would be a um, a, an important way to direct to the hotline, correct?
Correct. So based on what the statute says, you know, if there's an alleged violation of Utah Code or Board Rule, that's what would come in on the hotline. Um, we do receive, and, and I think Kevin mentioned this, sometimes people will just share an opinion. Um, we have a separate constituent feedback database where we're logging that and, and we treat it, we, we send that to the board when we get those. So just, hey, be aware, we got this feedback, but it's not treated the same. We don't handle it the same um, as we would a hotline. But you're absolutely correct. And I think a lot of times people just don't know where to go. Um, if they have an opinion, right? And so that educational process of this is a hotline, if you have an opinion, contact your state board representative directly, or maybe it's your local board rep directly. So education is important, but you were absolutely correct, Chair Davis.
Last quick question, since I don't see any other hands here and we're still waiting. Um, oh, it looks like they're here. Okay. I'll ask you offline another time.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Hansman, I'll turn the time over to you. Thanks so much to our audit committee for a great presentation.